All right, we're on.
All right, we're on air, folks. I'll let Betty get her camera or get her recorder going. Ready to go, Ben? Okay, good morning. It's Monday, January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty nine A M. This is the county board of supervisors. Bring the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is to review the agenda.
We'll do approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Santos, a second by Nathan. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same. Motion carries. Item number three is received comments from the public. Is anyone wishing to address a board an issue that's not currently on the agenda? If so, step to the podium and state your name and. We got a couple interesting.
My name is Greg Lindell. I live at seventeen oh five Lindell Avenue, and I have a couple comments. And one of the reasons I came this morning is I saw the paper where you guys received the thing to state on the slide. I can assure you from my knowledge, and I took those samples for thirteen years in North Star, that there is either some political pressure or very little testing or minimal testing done on them. For the simple reason is you can't put manganese and chrome and all that stuff in steel and not have some of it come out. It just doesn't happen. And somewhere up there at at North Star or Gerdau Steel, there should be a database that I'm sure you can't get that should test tell you because those samples were set into a independent lab to be tested in case there was a. And I guess I'd like to explain. Making steel like making a cup of coffee. You got coffee. Okay, so it's what you put in the coffee. Do you put cream? You put sugar? Do you put powdered cream? Whatever you put in, some of it comes out. If you're making rebar, about ninety-four percent of it is steel and six percent of it comes out of slag. If you're making good steel like C ten eighty, which would be like road grater blades, things like that, and you're putting in I beams and clips and and number one bundles and that kind of thing, you might get a ninety-five, ninety-six percent yield out of it. But as you make a worse grade of of steel or something that has different properties, there is a difference in the slag that comes out of there. And I I went to the meeting and I wanted to explain some things and they wouldn't let me talk at the meeting. All they do is let me. You you can't put stuff in there and not get some back out. So I became very, let's just say, very curious as to why the state would give you some feedback that says, oh, there's nothing in there. It's in there. But here's the other thing. I was told, and I don't want you to think I don't use it because I bought ten or twelve loads already myself this year and I use it. I was always under the impression from our qualified people up there that the stuff that's in there is in there, but the it's got it encapsulated at the at the molecular level, and you can't just get it out. You can't go over and wash it out and say, oh, yeah, well, here's here's chrome and here's manganese and here's that. You have to have a catalyst to get it out of there. Well, this guy that was that's doing this, he's kind of a tritale relative of mine. Yeah, if you breathe it in and you breathe enough of it in, but there's no way in hell you're gonna breathe enough of it in. And my other question was, since I used probably a hundred fifty, two hundred and fifty loads in my lifetime at the steel mill, if it's such a health problem, why isn't every steel worker in America dead? You know, because we and why don't they have more health problems? It's because you can't get it out. And when you guys showed that video on there of the dust coming off the road, slag is what? Ten times harder than ten times harder than limestone. So when you see that dust coming out of there, now, I'm not gonna tell you you don't get dust off of it. Because we wrecked a locomotive engine because when the dust does come up, it's so fine, it plugged the air cleaner and and we had a and we actually have a maintenance program where the people come in and revise, okay, this is what you need. But we had a dry February and and that locomotive got such a massive engine, it sucked the entire framework out of the locomotive and sucked that dust in there and it and it scratched the cylinder so bad that we had to replace the motor. So would I quit using it? I I might be more judicious than where I'd use it instead of putting it in front of somebody's house. But you guys, if if you believe that report that says it's not in there, you've lost all common sense. I I'm I'm telling you, you cannot put stuff in into there and not get some residuals back out. It just plain doesn't make sense. So that's that's what I want to talk to you about this morning. So if you got any questions.
Yeah, I think I think Greg, I think that's maybe a mischaracterization of what this what what was said and what the report said. And the report is actually on file. I think we put it on our website that we got. And what the what the what they absolutely did say was there were levels, you know, at per year, there were levels, but to your point, they were at such a level that they would pose no health, no health hazards in their opinion. So that's what that's what the report said. I don't remember the levels. And and you did see, I think that was the thing we saw in various tests, there were varying levels of magni- manganese.
Magnes.
Magnes was probably the one that was, most of the other trace elements were way below any kind of thresholds. Manganese had, there were a couple of areas where they were, it was higher than than.
Now, let me caution you on that also. They make many grades of steel at both steel mills. I came in here in ninety-one, ninety-two, and when I saw what the scrap metal was gonna be at the steel mill that I actually went to the other one and retired from, I was more concerned about different things like lead and that, that, you know, because there's a a lot of, let's say, more lower grade scrap goes into that steel mill. But you can go up there to the steel mill, and if you're making the better grades of C ten eighty and that, you can use a slag and there won't be any in it. But you get down into the rebars and stuff, you don't know what you're getting. You can get, you know, and and so, you know, I ask you, you know, if you're gonna do this, you know, what what and and maybe it's your fault and not like Keith uses what he he uses because it's cheap. What's your specification to use it? What did you have? Do you let anybody else in this room buy something without a specification? Why didn't Keith, why didn't you have Keith say, we're gonna buy, we're gonna buy this? Then you have this problem is if you if you buy it, can you prove to me that that load that you got isn't over those limits? You know, are you, you know, and and I'll and I'll give you another example. Nineteen eighty-seven, I went to the scrapyard at North, but I started running the scrapyard. Some of us farmers and and because I knew some stuff at the steel mill and I and I knew many hats, there was some question as to how good the road rock was. So we quit buying, we started buying clean, number one clean, instead of road rock. So if I said to you, can you give me, Jeff, can you tell me what the requirement is for the amount of egg slag, egg uh dust in road rock? What's the requirement? And can you prove it to me? So if you said to Keith, oh, you're buying road rock from them, are you getting what you bought or are you getting some lesser quality because you've got you've got too much egg lime in there? Because our roads aren't good shape, and I'm sure he can tell you, you know, what is it? Can you prove it? You know, I worked at steel mill. If my boss come to me and said, what do you, you you're buying this and and here's a specification. You prove to me, I have to go to my bosses and I have to prove to them what I'm buying meets that specification. Can you do that? I would bet you can't. Can you?
Yes, absolutely.
You you've got, you actually sent it out?
We buy Iowa D O T Class A roadstone. Okay, it has to meet that spec. We randomly.
You randomly tested?
The tests.
Okay. Okay, good. Because I, I mean, that because that's important that you do that. You know, and and I see that, you know, I read this stuff, it's like, well, what are you guys doing? Can you prove this? You know, we had all these job specifications at at Bolt Steel Mill. It's just like over at when the when you flooded over at Houdal Junction a couple of years ago. What's your, what is your written procedure to make sure that doesn't happen again? What are other written procedures you got? You know, and I and here's where I fault government for. We came to you and we asked you about drainage in our area. Ruben Thompson said there was culverts running under Salisbury Road. You said there's no record of it. We said there's a culvert that got ripped out on the north end of regional avenue because the west side of the road has to drain to the east side and drain out into the hill. The culvert's still laying there. You said there was no record of it. Why is there no record of this stuff? Why have you guys, you know, it's not you, but why is there not certain records of things? Why are the ditches not clean? Why does the water stand there and the roads go bad? I, you know, I don't know. But one thing I do know, and and this is the main reason I came in, we need better snow removal on Lindell's Hill. And probably on Kewcock Avenue. That's the only two roads that I know that are on the on the north side of the hill. We had UPS truck going to get you the other day. We had another wreck. And, you know, we can't have that stuff. You you've changed the road down there. There's more of a curve. They can't get a run coming up the hill. It's more coming up the hill than it is going down the hill. And, you know, so we we do need some, you know, it's not just going, it's not just grading it off. We gotta have some salt or something put on uh because as soon as something melts like it's doing now and then refreezes, it just becomes an ice skating rink. So, you know, I wanna put my two cents worth in on that slag issue because, you know, it it's very difficult. It's not like road rock where you're taking this massive chunk of rock and grinding it up and it's pretty much the same. Every cup of steel is different. And it all takes different alloys. And those alloys are in there, guys. And you say, oh, yeah, well, you know what? You can go along, you can take ten or twenty samples and you might be okay or just minimum. But all of a sudden, you're gonna get some high alloy stuff that, you know, you know, may maybe like get some bunch of railroad uh locomotive brake shoes in it or something and, you know, and you, there's a lot of things that are not good. So I said my two cents worth and you guys can, you know.
Thank you, Greg.
Do what you want.
Thank you.
We have one other interview you want to say?
Good morning. I'm Henry Mark, four one oh E D Go Watch Road, Muscatine. I wanted to address following Greg's comments on the slag issue. It's important, I I was personally surprised with the report from the D N R and and the Department of Public Health you received because historically, and I know my term is terminally wrong, Mineral Protection Commission, that the state of Iowa had taken a position that especially the use of 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 rolled steel slag uh would be prohibited at all costs because, as as Greg pointed out, uh there's a big difference between slag coming out of different kinds of steel mills. Slag that you know come out from original Bethlehem steel, they have a pretty good idea what's in there. Whereas slag coming out of rolled steel mills is a lot different because, you know, you're not dealing with a substance like, you know, iron ore from X county in 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 Michigan or Minnesota. You're dealing with what's in somebody's nineteen ninety-nine Chevy Bongo uh when that's when that's all taken apart. So I was surprised at at the the report. While I'm not speaking on behalf of No Slag Muscatine, I think it's, I think their comments last week in their statement and the follow-up comments by the president, Adioscu, are somewhat instructive. The fact is that the uh the report uh stated that they violated their own protocols in the testing. And that's something that's going to have to be looked at. There were some assumptions that certainly just seemed to be wrong. One of the assumptions is that dust doesn't go more than fifty feet from the road. This D N R had, years ago, had looked at the whole issue of dust from rock and determined that, you know, that that the migration of of dust goes considerably far. There's other issues having to do with with this that that would leave any any rational person to believe that this is safe to to be an incorrect assumption. We know, for example, that the studies that were done talk about the the ingestion, that digestion factors of of slag. The fact is that, and pointed out in the November meeting that that No Slag Muscatine had, is that there are no standards. And one of the reasons the state has historically barred the use of 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 slag for loads in other other than encased in something like Portland cement or asphalt is that there are no really good standards known for breathing the stuff in. Especially when you get to slag that has been ground up by trucks, buses, farm equipment. We regulate, we regulate airborne particles based on on generally two categories, P seventy and P and P ten. P seventy are larger particles that when you breathe in, most of the time, your body coughs out. Uh, the P ten particles are particles that you don't cough out. We don't know, for example, how safe breathing in magnesium and having that stay in your lungs is. I'll just relate to one particular chemical, a very commonly known one, arsenic, which is found in steel most slag. Uh, one of the problems, I, you can say that there are safe levels of arsenic. But how many of us wake up in the morning and start the day by putting a drop or two of arsenic in our coffee to liven it up? The answer is no one because the, you know, this is a known toxic substance. There is no safe levels for breathing it in. Uh, so I would commend, actually, the No Slag Muscatine's continuing research in the area especially of airborne ingestion of of slag. I think it's certainly way too early for anyone to assume that the problem is solved, that the material on the road is safe. Because just looking at the list of chemicals in there and the fact that many of these are like they're coming out and talking about with the water in Scott County, forever chemicals, that they never leave your body. I think it's just simply way too premature to say this material is safe and the matter is over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address the board's point? Okay, we'll move on. Item number four on the agenda is discussion of possible action approved claims dated January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty in the amount of eight hundred and two thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-one cents.
We'll do approve.
Second.
A motion by Santos, second by Nathan. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same. Motion carries. Item number five, we have the canvas of various drainage district elections. Betty, are you sharing that with us this morning?
I am sharing that with you. The drainage elections were held on Janu- Saturday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty, and the results are as follows. For drainage district number one trustee, there were four votes cast. Travis Perry received four votes. There were zero scattered votes and Travis Perry was elected. For drainage district number two, there were four votes cast. Corey Kalberg received four votes, zero scattered votes. Corey Kalberg was elected. For drainage district number four, there were three votes cast. Russ Van Acker received three votes. There were zero scattered and Russ Van Acker was elected. For drainage district number five, there were three votes cast. Mike Myers received three votes, zero scattered votes. Mike Myers was elected. For drainage district number nine, there were three votes cast. David Milage received three votes, zero scattered. David Milage was elected. For drainage district number ten, there were four votes cast. Gary Hepker received four votes, zero scattered. Gary Hepker was elected. For Muscatine-Lowiza Drainage District number thirteen, the district number two trustee, there were seven hundred and seventy-six votes cast. Terry Martin received seven hundred and seventy-six votes. There were zero scattered. Terry Martin was elected. For the Muscatine-Lowiza Island Levy District election, second district, there were seven votes cast. Keith Barton-Hagan received seven vote votes, zero scattered. Keith Barton-Hagan was elected. We have not yet received the election results for the Levy District seventeen, so that will be on upcoming agenda.
Okay, thank you, Betty. Item number six, discussion of possible action approved minutes in the January twentieth, twenty twenty regular meeting, the January twenty-first, twenty twenty special meeting, and the January twenty-third, twenty twenty special meeting.
We'll do approve.
Second. A motion by Santos, second by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same. Motion carries. Item number seven, correspondence. Santos, did you have any correspondence?
Just some other follow-up in regards to the drainage district and future plans that we may be looking at.
Nathan?
I did not.
I had a meeting on the twenty-first, and I don't believe we reported with the Levy Stakeholders Commission, a small subset of that group. Uh, we've invited the Bi-State and the Southeastern Iowa Regional Planning Commission and the Corps of Engineers had a couple of representatives in town to discuss uh issues down there and how they might be, if there's any federal resources available, at a good meeting and and hopefully we'll. Uh, I've suggested maybe for our joint meeting with the city of Muscatine that we try to put this as an agenda topic and maybe ask the Levy Stakeholders Mission to come and do a brief update to the both council and board at that meeting. And that was it for correspondence to me, Stan?
The only thing I had, I had a call from President Mount Payer in regard to the snow removal inside Mount Payer. And if the the problem stemmed from that heavy wet snow, as we all saw, so that was all we had there.
Doug?
I met with Bus Transportation, kind of on the same subject, pretty much same conversation. And they were out on the roads at the time, at least there, working on trying to get a deal about.
Committee reports, Doug?
Committees, January twentieth, one o'clock with the Bender Committee for Fair Board. January twenty-second on a Wednesday, we met with Doghouse Diesel and Race Committee. Get some dates set for that. January twenty-third, I met with Brian Killip for the fair to discuss advertising for this coming year with Fairgrounds. It wasn't a committee meeting, but Saturday, I forgot to mention, we had the Cavaliers Association of Fairgrounds. And that was Eric was there. That was a pretty good show. We had a houseful of people. Turned out quite well.
Good.
I had no committee reports.
Uh, I had, excuse me, on the twenty-second, I had the Bi-State Executive Committee meeting and then the Bi-State Regional Commission meeting. And on the twenty-third, we had the M C J C C uh committee meeting. And I will note from that committee, the committee voted to bring back to the boards both the city of Muscatine, that's a, that's a twenty-eighty organization between the city of Muscatine and the Muscatine County. And they would like us to consider dissolving that committee and changing the twenty-eighty to allow for that. So I'll put that on the agenda. Maybe this board will figure out how we wanna move forward with that. Uh, they were gonna, the the city members were gonna take it to the city for consideration of council as well.
I missed that. I I was at that committee meeting.
Yeah.
Forgot to bring that up. I attended that too.
Nathan? I did not have any committee meetings last week. Um, on Wednesday, the twenty-second, I had the executive we lead meeting, and then on twenty-three, we, no, Wednesday, the Thursday, the twenty-third, I had the regular board meeting with the we lead as well, too.
All right. Item number nine is receive information from county employees. Brian, I think you had something you wanted to share this morning?
Yes, I do. I just have a public announcement for the residents of Muscatine County. On behalf of the Muscatine County Emergency Management and the Bi-State Regional Commission, the planning process for the Muscatine County two thousand twenty Hazard Mitigation Plan is underway. A draft of the plan is expected to be completed in February. And we will have two public meetings scheduled next month. First one is February tenth at five thirty P M. And it'll be at the Musser Public Library, four oh eight East Second Street in Muscatine. And the second one will be February thirteenth at six P M. And this is at the Westlerby Public Library, four hundred North Spence Street. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Any other county employees, anything?
Christie, did you wanna say anything? I don't know if you're here to address this or not. This might be a good time.
I am. Um, in regards to budget decision-making. So you may go up to the.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So just in consideration, I know you have a lot of difficult decisions to make with financing and being responsible for our county dollars. I know I presented to the board um last week, I think, week before perhaps, and and did an additional request for a a point five F T E community care coordinator. Um, I just want to let you know, um, if there's any doubt of what this service is, it comes from the the Community Health Needs Assessment, which is a requirement of the county's Board of Health to complete every five years. We actually do it every three. It comes from the data from that of citizens saying obesity and diabetes prevalence is high in our county and we need to do something proactively to address it. So as public health, we have a model that we previously did that we would like to continue. We would like to modify with the support of the county. Our model is a collaborative coordinated intake. So we are seeking to screen many people throughout our county, not just our clinic and in our our walls of our organization. Our goal is to do A one Cs, high blood pressures, cholesterol screenings throughout the county through a collaborative effort of many organizations, doing social determinants of health screenings if an individual is screened as being high risk. Those screenings would then go to our community care coordinator who would do the further dive, understanding if there are any social determinants of health needs that that individual needs additional support with. The federally qualified health center is opening soon. Just got word that there will, it will be delayed a bit. They'll be coming the end of February. And I was seeking to understand, I don't wanna duplicate services. I don't wanna duplicate efforts. I want you to know that how I lead the public health department in every aspect is how can we collaborate with our county and other partners to have collective impact? How do we best utilize the resources we are given? How do we best utilize the resources we are given by many, from you, county board of supervisors, the Iowa Department of Public Health, Iowa Department of Human Services, and many philanthropy dollars? How do we take this and have a collective impact? The federally qualified health center is a primary care provider. They're gonna have a nurse practitioner delivering family practice. They will have oral health services, delivering dental oral health services, expanding to adults. They will have care coordinators for their patients only, like many other clinics do throughout the U S. What we are seeking support from, from you, is expanding that and having a collaborative countywide effort where we are screening individuals and only serving individuals with the highest needs. You and I may be able to access the services we need, know the right questions to ask. But what happens is when individuals don't, they end up back in the E D. They end up utilizing transportation through our emergency medical services. They end up going to our county and asking for dollars to help cover bills or housing or anything else that they can't cover, because now their medical bills are large proportions. So this is really seeking your support in a different way. It's meeting the needs assessment. It's expanding that care to our entire county. Again, there are twenty-five percent of individuals with diabetes and prediabetes in our county. This is a need that we are called to address as a gap-filling service, and that is what we are here requesting from you today. So I'd ask that you please take that into consideration as you have, you know, go forward in the very difficult decisions you have to be responsible with my dollars, your dollars, and everybody's dollars of our county. Any questions?
Christie, I just wanted to confirm, because I talked to you and I talked to Felicia about this. One of the concerns raised in our budget deliberations was whether or not this half the position would duplicate services. And then there was some question as to whether that position at the sixteen sixteen Cedar you mentioned would do it. It sounds like it doesn't. I'd talked to Felicia about it and she said that, basically echoed what Christie just said, that it would not, in fact, duplicate that. So, you know, I know when I got diagnosed with diabetes, gosh, eight years ago, public health, you know, I got referred right over to public health. And it may have been Mary's program at the time, I can't remember exactly who was there, but they did a great job of helping me. And there was a whole class of folks who had just gotten diagnosed with either diabetes or prediabetes. And, you know, it really, you see folks who didn't know the first thing about it, and I was one of them. So I think it's a really valuable service. So thank you for taking the time to make that distinction.
It's my pleasure.
Christie, you mentioned that it's a half of a position. Does that mean that it's only a part-time or is it funded from another resource for the other half?
It's just part-time. The person that in mind to do that would deliver part-time of our first five.
Twenty hours a week?
Twenty hours a week.
Tell me the name of the firm that's coming to Muscatine?
It's a federally qualified health center and it's called Community Health Care. It's coming from Scott County. And they'll be at sixteen sixteen Cedar Street. There are a lot of requirements that I won't stand up here and pretend to be a subject matter expert on, that they have to qualify rural health areas, data that they have to prove that they're needed here in our county. So there was definitely need identified from data sources that they would, could expand into our county. Very glad that they're coming, because in our needs assessment also was access to healthcare, access to oral health care. So we're looking forward to sitting down at the table. We were to have a meeting with them last week. We need to reschedule that because of the weather, we weren't able to meet. But looking at ways, how do we, again, collaborate, not duplicate efforts in serving our county residents? We did visit about, they partner with Genesis in the Quad Cities to deliver diabetes self-management education and diabetes prevention programming. And I shared with them that that would be an opportunity for us to visit, because we have dietitians, certified diabetes educators already on our team.
And that's a federally funded program?
Federally funded. So they receive a Medicaid reimbursement and then the federal adds on to that to meet all expenses, because usually Medicaid does not cover your actual cost.
I know when we talked earlier, that diabetes is a major issue in Muscatine County, but obesity was also, wasn't addressed that at all?
Yes, that's part of, it's part of the screenings that are being done is it's a wellness screening. And so on this coordinated intake effort, we've got collaborative partners from the Y M C A. We've got High V, because they have a dietitian there. So if it's an individual that's identifying risks, maybe they don't have finances, resources, we'd work with the High V nutritionist to walk through some general health and nutrition. So there are definitely a lot of different collaborative partners. Muscatine Diabetes Walk Project is sitting at the table. There's a ISU Extension. So there's many of us working together to figure out how to provide education and information to those individuals. So yes. And ISU Extension has some amazing educational materials that we share with clients and patients now.
Their home office is in Scott County?
Yes.
You would consider this a satellite office, then?
Yes.
Do they have other satellite offices in the state?
Good question, I'm not aware.
I'm just curious.
I don't know about around in the Quad Cities, how many, if there's additional. So, good question, I'll certainly, I can follow up on that and get back to you.
My point being, on that, if they're in Cedar, Clinton, whatever, Texas, doesn't matter. If we'd be able to reach out to them and actually see if there is coordination within their, that particular county's health department and the satellite office possibly.
There's federally qualified health centers all over the United States, all over the state of Iowa, and they are absolutely a partner with public health departments. I can share that with you. Specifically, the Quad Cities, I don't know a lot about their operations in that area, in that region, which is where, a place that I need to get curious on and want to sit at the table and figure out how we can work together. Because that is an expectation across the board, across the state, that public health departments collaborate with them.
Christie, the question I have is this, the care coordinator position, and I believe you've had that, you said, for two or three years, this half F T E. And where was that originally granted through? Who was that granted through? That was a community, some kind of a community grant, public health received. And, you know, was that a state grant through state public health?
Yes.
And then there's no law?
It actually came from CMS. So Medicare to the Iowa Department of Public Health. State innovation model for clinic and community collaborative. Through that work, we identified this as an additional need in our county because of the people that we served, the navigation that we did for individuals, and then meeting together after the health needs assessment with Empowering Healthy Behaviors Committee. This was identified as a collaborative to continue on the work at a reduced F T E.
Okay, so you confused me. So there was a, there was federal money that came to public health and then it went to this grant program to fund this position and now it's going away, or?
It's been gone for almost a year.
Okay. But it was federal dollars that came to the state?
And the state.
And then the state did not continue to fund it? Okay.
They did not continue to receive the dollars from CMS.
Yeah, okay. CMS is?
Medicare.
So Christie, that makes me think, and so then the position that we, that you have before, it was full-time and now it's part-time? And so they're part-time currently right now?
Yes. They're a full-time person right now.
So they're full-time and you're proposing them to go to part-time?
No.
I could use, that's what I'm asking, because that's.
I'm asking, I have, currently have a position that the person is part-time during the Community Care Coordinator, and I'm asking for dollars from you to continue to sustain that, sustain that work. We're utilizing right now our local public health grant to cover the care coordination of that. But last fiscal year, we ran out of our care coordinate, our local public health grant dollars by April. So we don't have the dollars to sustain this need in our county. This person also works part-time in our first five program, which is care coordination for early childhood in collaboration with medical clinics and practices that sign on for that specific service. So this person is doing part-time in first five, which is covered by another program and grant dollars from the Iowa Department of Public Health. And the other part is still the community care coordinator role, utilizing local public health grant dollars at this point.
And is there means testing on this care coordination service? Or is this, this is any taxpayer?
Anybody is eligible for this who receives a screening, any county member. So if they are at a health fair event or an event that we will be at or one of those community collaborative partners will be at, where an A one C is done, blood pressure, cholesterol check is done, if they identify high risk, if they sign an agreement, they can receive contact from our Community Care Coordinator to receive services. So it's for anybody.
Last year, how many, how many visits or, I'm gonna say?
How many touches?
How many touches did this coordinator have?
I need to go back through and get back to you on that to be more precise. I know the care coordinations that were done and it was over eight hundred care coordinations that were delivered from this individual.
Even though they were still doing part-time, first, whatever, first five as well, too?
They just started doing first five two months ago.
Oh, okay.
Because we have to find a way to sustain that position and that role. We can't continue to sustain it with all the local public health grant dollars. Or other programs and services will not be able to be done.
Okay.
And that's why we're asking you for your help, because it's been identified as a need and we need help.
What was the amount on that again, twenty?
Twenty-three five.
Twenty-three five? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Christie.
Thank you.
Okay, any other county employees wish to? Okay, item number ten A is items with the administration office. First one is action authorizing final acceptance in Muscatine County Courthouse, third floor courtroom renovation project. So this looks like that's just the final closeout on everything. They got the punch list all taken care of and.
The final, yes, and the final payment, what you approved when you approved the claims, the final payment to our contractor, so.
Okay.
You came in under budget, underspent the contingency in the budget, so it turned out well.
All right.
Thank you.
So we need a, we need a motion.
I move to approve.
A motion by Santos.
I'll second.
Second by Nathan. Any discussion?
Could work.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? I've gotten good feedback from the courts on the usability of the facility now meets our needs much better. I think that's good.
It's, it's great.
It's a good project.
It's nice in there, I tell you what. Going over there, it's a pleasure compared to how it used to be.
Yeah. Okay, item B, discussion of possible action to prove policy, B O S one hundred, board of supervisors, travel and training expenditure policy.
I have a proposed tweak of the language on ten B. And that says the board must obtain prior approval from the remainder of the board. I would just suggest prior approval from the board, because remainder of the board makes it sound like you have four people voting. I'm not even sure if that's legal.
Yeah. Duly noted, yeah, I think that's, makes sense. I looked at the policy, it's a pretty simple policy. But I think it states clearly, what I think our intent was, we budgeted five hundred bucks a year for travel and other expenses for board members' classes. And if anybody decides they want to go to D C or do something, they probably should talk to the rest of the board and have a public, make sure the public knows what's going on. And I think that's a fair.
Absolutely.
Very fair.
So I move to approve.
So you moved to approve with the amendment?
With the amended.
Yep. So a motion by Santos.
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Item number two is discussion of possible action to prove revised policy, board supervisor's meeting agenda, meeting agenda policy.
Right, our policy for a long time, up until now, has been that stuff has to be turned in by Tuesday. Once we went to a system where we're essentially emailing instead of physically mailing packets, we've certainly relaxed that requirement. So this just reflects what we're actually doing.
What our actual practice is.
What we're actually doing now, yep.
Approve.
Second.
You have a motion by Nathan. Second by Santos. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, opposed, the same? Motion carries. Item D, discussion of possible action to approve revised policy number one oh six, policy procedures for use of the county administration building outside of normal business hours.
We recently transferred control of the keys, of the county keys, from the auditor's office to the administration office. We just felt like that probably made more sense. And as part of that changeover, I took a look at this policy, which did talk about both courthouse and administration. We really don't have any situations where we're authorizing after-hours use of the courthouse. There's really not space for that now. So I removed that from this policy and made it just about the administration building. I was contacted by Alan after I put this out, and it's his recommendation that under appropriate uses, the last item says, other uses may be appropriate if they're nonprofit, nonreligious in nature. He suggested that we remove the nonreligious.
I agree with that, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll move to approve as amended.
I'll second. I have a motion by Santos, second by Scott.
Who decides what's appropriate? Is that the administration office?
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Anything else, Nancy?
I don't have anything else.
Any board members have anything else? Meeting is adjourned.